Not here. So your comments will be your comments, your opinions. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it short because I'm working with the town of attorneys to find out where we stand and what we can do. Okay, because when things are on paper, there always seems to be a way that somebody who wants to do things their way can be able to find a way to circumvent what's on that paper. So Columbia Lake Association or Lake Management, you know, or anybody, I'll open it up really to the floor, so. And just give me your name and address.
Mary Reichel, thirty-four, here down in Devon. I have a statement from Columbia Lake Association. It is an opinion statement on behalf of the board of directors of Columbia Lake. I'm not gonna read the entire thing. I'd like to cut to the chase. Like as you became aware of that there was a possibility of launching this called a pontoon houseboat on Columbia Lake. That did happen. Before finalizing our discussions to discuss with the town, it became a reality and was launched at Coxman in the nineteen thirty on Sunday, June eighteen. Our unanimous consensus was that the CLA support the town in removing this pontoon houseboat immediately based on a rationale of three reasons. To cut to the chase, we feel those reasons are, one was just mentioned. There was a fraudulent or deceitful use of the boat gate launch key. In discussions with the director of recreation, not only is there a form that needs to be completed that ties that key to the boat that is being used, but when this particular individual came to get a key, his motorboat was already on the lake. And when asked if he was using it for any other purpose or why he would be using it, he referred specifically to the motorboat, never to the houseboat. So we believe that that is a fraudulent and deceitful use of the key to use it for another boat. We would recommend, fair minimum, that his key, or any key, have a penalty of being forfeited when such an act or action happens on the lake. I think there has to be some penalty for this. Our second reason is the boat, as today, on a dock, has no Connecticut boat registration. The town, excuse me, the Connecticut law requires that all boats, whether mothers and sailboats, nineteen and a half feet or longer, be registered in number before launching. We see no visible proof of that as it sits on a dock on Columbia Lake. Today, this is called a Sun Tractor Regency Watercraft. It has Vermont registration, stickers and numbers. There are no Connecticut stickers or numbers. Since the watercraft was not inspected or certified and there's no visible proof of Connecticut registration prior to June nineteenth launch, the houseboat owner, we believe, did not comply with the state of Connecticut boat regulations in launching this houseboat. Our third reason is, this is a houseboat. And our ordinance does prohibit houseboats. There's some language there, we agree, that probably has to be adjusted. But it is, as stated, from the manufacturer, White River Marine in Sprayfield, Missouri, a pontoon houseboat. That's how they made them, that's how they sold them through the early two thousands. They stopped selling them about two thousand and nine. It is considered a houseboat. By the owner of this houseboat's own words to our town administrator on June nineteenth, he tacitly admitted that he had launched a houseboat. In doing so, he offered to remove parts of that houseboat so it would become legal. Houseboats are prohibited on Columbia Lake. Whether it has a sink, a generator, an air conditioner, a microwave, a toilet, and where he agrees to remove any or all of these houseboat elements, the current state of the houseboat is a violation of our town ordinance as launched. It was launched as a houseboat. It seems, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck and whacks like a duck, it's a duck that flies here. Again, as the owner admitted, it's a houseboat and houseboats are prohibited. I'd like to make a note about the owner suggesting that he changed the houseboat in some way to be able to make it legal for the lake, as only a pontoon boat, for instance. In that note is watercraft alterations above the lake that at this moment in time would not be allowed. If the owner chose to make alterations to the houseboat, our town standard guidelines for granting permission for the construction and maintenance of structures and shoreline on Columbia Lake prohibits construction, including dismantling of any structure while on the lake during the recreational seasons from March sixteenth through at least October fifteenth. On other years, it's November first. Construction on or over the lake is not permitted in that time period. And when allowed out of season, any construction requires an application for and an approved permit from our Board of Selectmen. This houseboat, we believe, must be removed from the lake for any alterations involving dismantling or removal of parts. In closing, the CLA asks for more to select. We hope a motion tonight for the immediate return of the boat launch key and the removal of the pontoon houseboat based on the above rationale. We have provided such language for a motion. Based on understanding the houseboat is prohibited by our town ordinance for use on Columbia Lake, was fraudulently launched at the town boat launch with the key not registered to this watercraft per our boat launch key policy. And being this houseboat does not display Connecticut boat registration stickers or numbers as required by Connecticut law before launching a boat, the Board of Selectmen, we would ask authorize the town administrator with a resident state trooper to secure the boat launch key from Michael Hartling, eighteen Longview Park West, and direct Mr. Hartling to remove the pontoon houseboat that was illegally launched. The key repeal could be that the delivery of this motion and the removal of the houseboat must be complete on or before Saturday, June twenty-fourth. We believe that if it is not removed, that a penalty should be applied on a daily basis so that it hurts someone's pocketbook when they do something illegal. That's the end of our statement, again, on behalf of the entire Columbia Lake Association, board of directors. You have our opinion statement. Any questions, Kathy?
Is anybody living on this thing?
Excuse me?
Is anybody living on that?
It was just launched two days ago, I can't.
I didn't see evidence of that. Yes?
Carmen Vance, One Beach Road. I have a question. If he launched that at nine fifteen at nine, don't we have marine patrol who are scheduled through ten?
Not that way. I think where there's sundown, sundown. And I don't think sundown is at nine fifteen. Well, the longest day of the year is what, June twenty-second?
It's not much till then.
No, I know, but.
It was approximately fifteen, more towards nineteen fifteen. We make an effort in this town to have people abide by the policies and rules that have been established. And as an example, I remodeled the front of my block. I had a dock. It has two prongs on it and had its opening in the middle. We used to have rid of small boats, we pulled in. Did away with both, never did away with the opening. And then I wanted to fill that in. Couldn't fill it in because it wasn't more square foot. He said, Tommy, I'll just move one side to the other so we don't have a hole in the middle anymore. So when somebody, as we get older, doesn't fall in the hole. So we couldn't do that. And I fight with this challenge, you know? Because it is a policy and we need to abide by it. And if we sit around and we let people like this gentleman ignore what's right, what's written, then we're gonna have a problem on that lake. And the lake is pristine. And if he can have a damn houseboat, then I can have a three hundred horsepower boat if I want it. You can't just let people do these things. And I can remember going with a state trooper to someone's house on that boat and he told them to do something and they did it. And I'm still confused why we seem to think that this is an issue. The man is violating the rules and the regulations and somebody should need to enforce them.
Let me ask a question about the registration. If I'm a Columbia resident, I have a place in Vermont or something and I have a board of Vermont that's registered in Vermont, I can't bring it to Columbia?
That's a good question.
Go ahead.
I refer to Rich Roberts, but I think, I think as long as it's legally registered for the current year in Vermont, it can go on the state of Connecticut waters. All of the same thing as if it were registered in Maine and sailed down on the Sound and is anchored in one of our marinas. The issue, and so if a towns person bought a boat and it was registered in another state and it was legal in that state at the time, I think he could probably have it on the lake if he was otherwise entitled to have it on the lake until such time as he could get a Connecticut registration.
I think the difference is if he bought it, he's got to register his name in the state of Connecticut then. If he lived in Vermont and was registered up there and towed it down here and lived in Columbia, I think that's the gray area.
Yes, if it's registered, if it's not registered in his name, even if it's registered for twenty twenty-three, it's not legal. It's a transfer and it's gotta be completed and registered in the state of Connecticut. If he has a residence in Vermont, legally had it registered up there under his name, he could probably get away with that registration number, but that's.
So I'm going to repeat what I said ten minutes ago. The regulations need to be tightened up because it does say houseboat forbidden in our lake regulations and stuff. But if you read the text, and I don't have it in front of me, there's Wiggles room in there. There's Wiggles room, and when we go like this, that's how I.
I'm just asking, houseboats are used as a permanent or temporary residence. I think you're talking about that.
That's it, if he's not using it as a permanent or temporary residence, he could say, I can have it on here, I'm not using it. I'm just, I understand. I understand your comment. And if it's wrong, I want him off the lake. But I have to be buttoned up tight, watertight. Because I don't want to go to court over this because the guy would hold this up all season long with that boat on the water. I want it watertight. So I understand your frustration. I get it, I feel it too, okay? But I'm gonna, we're gonna do it right. We're gonna do it right. I appreciate everything you brought to us. There's stuff in there. I asked Rich Roberts tonight, when you listen, you need to hear what they're saying because it's stuff we're gonna be able to use if we're in this right. Yeah, I believe that we truly are. But I gotta be ready, okay? I gotta be ready.
Just one comment, I think the next step has to be, when I inquired about this pontoon houseboat to the manufacturer, they can't give us any information and are willing to unless we have a serial number of that boat. So the next step forward, we need to understand.
The fact that you brought the make and model and they said it's a houseboat is wonderful. Okay? There's other issues that we're looking at on the boat, safety. Okay, so I need to be watertight. Henry.
Henry Beck, forty-one, Sleepy Howard Road. I just want to make a point, we kind of loosely talked about rules and regulations and ordinances. This is an ordinance. It's more forceful than the, let's say, the C-Wall regulations, which are merely just guidelines. And this is a town ordinance similar to the zoning ordinance and otherwise.
But I still have to be.
I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with what you said. I just want to make it clear it is an ordinance, yeah?
Chris, do we have any indication that it does have fixed toilet facilities?
Yes, because he told me, I'll take the fix, I'll take the toilet out. And my comment was, you can always put it back. It's, it's built as a houseboat. If you take whatever off, you can put it back. Okay, so, yes, Henry?
As a member of L-NAC, I will speak up on the regulations that we have that are guidelines and, but also speak to our ordinance on horsepower. And with respect to horsepower, we have a policy of interpreting that ordinance basically based on what the manufacturer states the horsepower is. And we have a procedure and policy that says that we don't accept governors or variations or changes to the manufacturer's description of the boat because they can be changed back in the same way. So we have a precedent for saying just what you just said.
Thank you. Again, that's important information, I appreciate that. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, we, Mary said, excuse me, Carmen said, we have a, it's a beautiful lake, it's pristine, is what you said, pristine. We put money into the gate and to protect the water from invasive species, we know. And most of us don't live on the lake, but we know. It's for everybody in town. So we are looking at this, we're gonna look at it very hard in the next few days. And when we're ninety-nine-nine short, we will, we will do what's right, what we can do, believe me, okay?
A lot of times, somebody will threaten to sue you.
I don't care, let them threaten. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that too. Listen, I wanted to go, I wanted to go to court when it came to different taxes in town, okay? You know, they want to throw me into contempt and everything, wonderful. At least it hits the paper and all of a sudden now there's people on our side because we're doing the right thing. I got no problem with that, believe me. I love great stripes, so.
Steve, can I, can I grab one minute from you? Bob Miller, twenty Lake Road.
Go ahead, Bob.
Could we at least get our marine patrol to go over there and do an inspection of the boat as it stands right now? That way we'd have more information or are we, are we beyond that?
No, I wouldn't do that, it's a safety issue. I think I want to go the route we're going. I think if we send marine patrol over there, they can get within so many feet and try and take pictures or whatever, but they can't. I don't think they can.
What, what I was referring to is at least get the boat identification numbers with what, which is typical for any boat launch. We have the ID number, we could do more investigation on our side. And you know, if you look this, if you look this up, sometimes it says party barge. It may not say houseboat. So we gotta be careful on what we're actually referring to here. But having the ID number will give us more, you know, more specific identification of the vessel. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else from the board? My, anybody? We know we have work to do, believe me. Okay, I thank you all for your comments. Appointments and resignations. Resignation of Josh Stern, he's the board clerk. Resignation of Lynn Bonacore from Kona. And the resignation of Kathy Rowe from Kona. You know, Josh did a nice job as a board clerk. You got another position, a full-time position. Lynn, I'm not sure why, but Kathy, I know she's not here, but I just want to put it in her record. This is a woman who worked forever. Tirelessly, I mean, just for Kona on the mission for the aging. And she, she had no problem standing up to me and telling me what she wanted or what we needed, that type of thing. In her email, she was proud to say that she kind of was on the board for three things. Care for the aging and, and all that we can do up there, social services and stuff for the aging. And the other one was senior housing. And she did honestly put in there that the lack of senior housing or the lack of action frustrated her. Well, I'm gonna say it frustrates us also. We, we talk about it often. We look at property when it comes up. It has to be, we looked at some property today. The bottom line is it has to be financially able to be done by the town. We have to get more than a few units on there. It has to be aesthetically pleasing for the people who would live there for the town. It has to be accessible for emergency services. We can't build senior housing at, at, you know, eight hundred, five hundred thousand dollars a dwelling. We just can't do it. We're trying, so I understand your frustration, Kathy. We're not giving up. But you know, if you see her or if she reads this or whatever, we're not giving up, we're still looking, but it has to, the formula has to work. It just has to work, so. They're there, we don't need a motion on those. So those are resignations. Town administrators report.
All right, and we did get the permits required to hold our summer concert series and we also got the pole harness, Phil, as you requested.
Yes.
So that's, that's all set, so the summer concert series can begin. And I got notification from the Senator Austin that we received a grant. The language about the grant states it's a two hundred thousand dollar grant, but verbally I have two hundred fifty thousand, so we need to figure that out. And it's for equipment or vehicles for fire department. The fire department's here tonight, if you have any questions.
Can we use that? You gotta me to choke you up, chief. Bring your tears to my eyes too, buddy.
Please, please, so. You have to be fire chief. For the past couple of years, anytime I was able to get a ear of a politician, I made sure I hounded them and spoke about the fire department, our small community, volunteer service in general and how important that is to communities like ours that we have, is one hundred percent volunteer. We don't have paid staffing and the support from the politicians and their, their agenda and stuff to always keep us in mind. So I was always talking to them about that. And Kathy Austin and Tim Hager have always been a great supporter of us. They brought this bill to the, to the Senate. It started about a year ago at the seventy-fifth, I got their ear there and was talking about some of the grants that we were writing to the federal government. We were awarded SCBA one for our AirPAC, for Grand New AirPAC. That was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we were talking about replacing our forestry unit, which is our oldest apparatus. And that was around the two hundred, two fifty number. So I believe that's where they got that from. And they, again, they, they worked tirelessly for us. I wanted to show our support to them and, because they reciprocate that and getting this bill introduced and saving taxpayers money here in town that we all know we love, so.
Yeah, I mean, thank you very much, chief, appreciate the words and stuff and absolutely. Not only does it save the taxpayers money, but it puts the necessary equipment that you need to continue to provide the valuable service that you do. So, you know, thank you all for your volunteering. I get those nine one one calls all the time, so when you're going out there, I'm looking at, I'm going back to sleep sometimes, but I'm thinking.
Well, yeah, fortunately, volunteerism throughout the country is down. Fire service in general is, is difficult to hire. I, I work professionally as a career firefighter. Even as a paid firefighter, it's become very difficult to hire. So volunteer service is getting older and not that youth coming in like it used to be. So a lot of towns and areas around us are, are struggling. I spoke about this before, we're one of, I think, two towns in eastern part of, east of the river that is a hundred percent volunteer that runs the Andes. And it will be in the next tour, doing about half our calls. So again, this, this money is, is tremendous. It's helpful, gives us, saves our equipment and again allows us to continue what we all are passionate about and helping the community and doing our jobs again.
And I see you have a, like a recruitment drive coming up pretty soon. Four towns or five towns involved in it?
Yeah, so we're starting again, trying to think outside the box as volunteerism is, is down across the board. So we're starting to try to pool resources with surrounding towns and again just tackle this issue that is nationwide and, and address it as a whole again. The magical word of regionalization is even starting to come up even more and more. So again, we're doing all we can to, again, stave off the possibility of paid staffing.
What's the date of that recruitment drive there?
Next Thursday night, down at the Main Moose, our partners from the Main Moose, Raj Bull and help us out. We have North Wind on Coventry, Andover, Lebanon, and us, there are six towns that are all gonna be there. And we're gonna do a demonstration on using the Drawn Life at six o'clock. So five to seven thirty.
Excellent.
We'll be down there.
You're good, thank you. Anything else? There's some correspondence there. Some nice stuff. Nice letter to Beth Lund. She had a power outage and she was instrumental in helping out over there on the public park. So that's good, excellent. Other than that, look for financials. We have some transfers, the end of the year, it happens all the time. We'll move money around to be able to pay our bills. So we have, I moved to approve the transfers as presented. A total of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four hours. We're looking at them all individually, if you have a question, please let me know. From employment, contracted services, telephone, postage, postage, all stuff that we use. What's in here is really.
Just previous ones, that's the cyber, costs of the cyber, cyber insurance. What that was, a boost to seven grand. So terminals are getting sophisticated. AI will be.
You can go back to General Roger.
Don't open any eyes. Any questions? You good? All those in favor of transfers? We'll see, we'll get to them, yeah. No refunds, I moved to approve the payment of bills totaling fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one. No refunds. I moved to approve the payment of bills totaling fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents consisting of twenty-two, twenty-three emergency, twenty-two, twenty-three regular credit card and paycheck.
You had a problem with your senior van added to it?
Where did you see that? Where did you see that?
Four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, last page, four thirty-five.
Show the senior.
No, we don't remember getting a heads up on that.
I mean, it's a fairly new van, right?
No, no. It's about eight. Not eight, I've been here seven years, so it's probably.
Probably six.
Six years old. Yeah.
Right after the warranties all went away.
The base pile, we just rebuilt the lift, so we have that fixed.
Where was it towed from? That's my question.
I don't remember being towed back. This is.
When T and B sells, that's like, it's on man still.
Right.
I don't know. I'll find out.
Yeah, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, what was it towed up to Anfield where we purchased it? We purchased it up in, up in Anfield and that's where it works on, it's worked on.
And maybe it had to be towed up there, it had something done. I'll find out.
We don't have AAA every time.
I was gonna say, I don't know if AAA will cover a van.
Well, I don't know if it'll cover it, yeah.
For commercial.
Yeah, doesn't like to cover commercial.
All right, I'll find out.
Anything else?
Boat house design. Put the house for me.
Nobody else? Great. All those in favor of paying bills? Okay, back to anything, audience is sitting. We'll open it up. Any comments about anything? No? Good. Okay, board member comments? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to suspend the Board of Selectmen meeting and ask you to go into executive session at seven forty-two. And I invite Mark Walter, the town administrator, Rob Hellstrom and Rich Roberts, town council, to join the executive session.
Tom McGrath asked if we could join to represent Mauna Pān State Park in one of the ladies' discussions.
Yeah.
I have to reduce myself from the discussion of the.
Oh, yeah, that's. Okay, so they're here for that and you're out for that.
Real estate personnel.
Those won't be long.
I have to do this first.
Okay. And Ian and Tom, would you mind just waiting in my office?
Don't listen to me.
And Rob is here for real estate. There's two real estates. And. They're probably looking for my light.
You just sit there in the dark. Would you look like a woman? Who's the next to Ryan? I'm not quite sure why it's here. I have. I have the, I have tape.
And Jen, Sharon, we're gonna have to.
Ask you to go.
Ask you to leave, please. With executive session.
Are you frozen, Sharon?
I don't know.
No, just on a nice blink. Sharon? Blink twice if you can hear us.
God, put her in the way. I'll tell you later. Okay, Ian, hold on.
Came out of the executive session eight thirty-one.
So I'm going to resume the Board of Selectmen meeting at this time. I moved to approve the revised job description for Facilities Manager and to approve Dan Johnson as the Facilities Manager. All those in favor. This time, make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor.
These are the same things we can make a motion for that or something?